We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting, December the 3rd, 2024. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole from November the 19th. Are there any additions or corrections of those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved for the December, I mean, for the November 19th Committee of the Whole. Public Park and Recreation Board, Mayor Pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, there we have one vacancy. Term begins December 19th, 2024, and ends December 18th, 2030. We have an incumbent Elliot McIsaac, who served one full term. I would like to nominate Elliot McIsaac for a second full term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Elliot McIsaac to serve a second full term on the Parks and Rec, uh, Public Parks and Rec Board. Is any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will reaffirm Mr. McIsaac later on in the agenda. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Any questions for the city manager? Ms. Crouch, I know you have something for us. There's an addition to our agenda tonight.
Yes, we have one other item of business, item 11A, which is requesting approval of a contract with Alabama Roofing and Sheet Metal Company Incorporated for the Dean Road Recreation Center roof replacement and HVAC project. This is a budgeted project, expected, but bids came in Wednesday afternoon before Thanksgiving, and your packets were out the door before we could adequately review the bids. So that's why you're seeing that tonight. The only other thing I have too is we do have our city engineer Allison Fraser retired, and our interim city engineer and engineering services manager, Brandy Azell, you know her as our traffic engineer as well. She is acting in that role for the foreseeable future.
Good. All right. Welcome, Brandy. Glad to have you. All right. Any questions for Ms. Crouch? All right. Is there a move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
All right. Committee of the Whole is adjourned. We will start the regular meeting We'll call it a order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for December the 3rd, 2024. We welcome everyone who's joined us here this evening. Welcome those who are listening on WA and I, and who are watching through our streaming services. Welcome to our meeting. Roll call, Lindsey?
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
And.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is the first meeting of the month, and so this is our opportunity to recognize our outstanding employees, as well as our Employee of the Month.
We're proud to introduce you to our December Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Eric Carson, the Water Resource Management Director. It is my honor to nominate Corey Walt as Employee of the Month for December 2024. Corey joined the Water Board in March of 2015 as utility maintenance worker in the Distribution Division. In October of 2017, he was promoted to his current position as heavy equipment operator. Corey's main responsibility is to operate various construction equipment, including excavators and backhoes, to facilitate water system construction and maintenance activities. It is his role as a crew leader, in his role as a crew leader, he is responsible for ensuring work is performed to the standards of the Water Board and that job sites maintain a safe work environment. The crews he leads are routinely performing work in or near roadways with heavy vehicle and pedestrian traffic. Therefore, work site safety is a priority, and Corey takes this responsibility seriously. Corey's been involved in numerous water main projects recently, including two water main replacement projects on South and North Gay Street, two water main projects on Byrd Street, and new water main on Briarwood Avenue in the Tanglewood subdivision, and several improvement projects on South College Street and Sanford Avenue. Corey also performs many other tasks, such as excising valves to keep them operational, checking meters with zero usage and making necessary repairs, installing antennas on meters, flushing hydrants to collect data on water flow and pressure, investigating possible leaks, pressure complaints and water quality concerns, and properly maintaining equipment. He also does an excellent job serving in the after hour on-call rotation. Even more outstanding is his willingness to come in when not on-call and to assist coworkers in need. Corey conducts himself in a polite and respectful manner, takes pride in his work, and has proven to be an extremely valuable member of the Water Resource Management Department. For these reasons and many more, I am pleased to recommend Corey Walt for the Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes. for our, being recognized as our Employee of the Month, and to all of our employees, thank you for what you do, especially this time of year when so many of us are enjoying time with our families. Many of our teams are out working, making sure that the city continues to run well while we're having good times celebrating the holidays. So thank all of you for your sacrifices and everything that you do on behalf of the citizens of Auburn. During the Committee of the Whole earlier tonight, the City Council reappointed Elliot McIsaac to serve a second term on the Public Parks and Rec Board. Under announcements tonight, I have a number of things I'd like to run through real quick. I just want to say thank you to the downtown merchants for hosting the holiday market over the weekend, and as well as this Sunday, they'll be hosting and organizing the Christmas parade. Remind everybody that'll be at 2:00 on Sunday afternoon in downtown Auburn. I want to say congratulations to all of our students who'll be graduating a week from this weekend. Thank you for spending your four, five, or six years here in Auburn with us, and we look forward to you coming back, and thank you for being an Auburn Tiger, and congratulations on your graduation. I want to say thank you to the UPC at Auburn University for organizing the tree lighting ceremony this past Sunday at 5:00 at the Sanford Park. What a great crowd there. They are very accommodating for our community to participate in this, as well as the university, and it was a great time last Sunday night to be with all the performers, which included children from our school system, as well as the university, and Coach Pearl, and Dr. Roberts, and Dr. Woodard, as we kicked off the holiday season. I appreciate their inclusion in that. I want to say thank you to the Dean Road Elementary School for inviting me over recently for their art parade, where they recreated the Macy's Day Parade in art, and it was a cool little exercise that they do every year over at Dean Road, and I appreciate the opportunity to go over there and spend some time with the children. During the Thanksgiving holidays, there was a Habitat Celebration as a dedication, another dedication of a house to the Lamb family. That has been such a personal blessing to me, as I, in my years of being the mayor, to go to those ceremonies and watch those families receive those keys as they enter into their house. Many of them, the first house that they've ever owned, all of them have participated in building that house, and they put their own time and sweat into the construction of that house. Recognizing the companies or the volunteers that have helped build those houses, it's a, it's a great and beautiful picture of our community for people coming together to make the world a better place. I want to remind everybody, this Friday at the Crerri Preserve, they'll be celebrating the, the opening of their new classroom buildings. This is open to the public. They'll be giving tours about mid-afternoon, and at 2:30, there'll be a ceremony. This is certainly open to the public. We appreciate the Crerri Preserve, the unique experience that is such an Auburn experience that our citizens and our children can have at the Crerri Preserve. Appreciate their creativity and the way they think outside the box to provide opportunities for our children and all of us to go out there and be a part of nature. They do a great job, and I'm grateful for everything that they do. Does anybody else on the council have an announcement they'd like to make tonight?
I would like to.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank Mr. Davis, Al Davis, and his crew for making the senior citizen Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving dinner a success, and thank you, Al, because y'all always have everything up and running, and we had a nice crowd, and everybody really enjoyed theirselves. And I also want to say war eagle. I am not an Alabama fan. I am a war eagle. So war eagle to you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We were confused.
I'm that.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all. Thank y'all for having me. I'd like to start with some exciting news. The top five candidates for Ms. Auburn have been announced. Congratulations to, in no particular order, of course, Ellen Connell, Sophie Marino, Riley Parman, Vera Smith T, and Kendall Anderson. We're looking forward to seeing their campaigns and learning more about their visions for this important role. And other updates, campaign registration for upcoming SGA elections closed last night, marking the start of preparations for an exciting spring election season. The final SGA Senate and Cabinet meetings of the semester also took place yesterday evening. The SGA Senate passed a resolution supporting the construction of a new sidewalk on North Donahue Drive connecting West Glen Avenue and West Magnolia Avenue. This is a big step towards improving pedestrian safety and accessibility in this busy area, and we are excited for the continued partnership on that issue. The 2024 Beat Bama Food Drive has officially wrapped up for the year. For the past 31 years, Auburn University and the University of Alabama have worked together to raise over 11 million pounds of food for families in need across Alabama. This year, Auburn contributed more than 900,000 pounds of food, bringing the total to over 1.3 million pounds statewide. So really proud of the work they've been doing. Looking ahead, we have Ring Night coming up this Thursday, beloved Auburn tradition, and also men's basketball. We're on a roll right now, ranked number two, going to Duke to play on Wednesday, tomorrow afternoon. Everyone's really excited for that. At least I am. Finally, City Breakfast coming up Friday morning. Looking forward to that. We have two of the sponsoring authors of the resolution on the North Donahue sidewalk going to be there as well, so I think there will be some good discussions coming out of that. And finally, I do want to say, this is going to be my last city council meeting. It's a little bit upsetting to say that, but I've accepted an internship in DC, so I'm going to be gone. But I, I do think that this experience, being, being able to come to these city council meetings to share information with you guys on behalf of the student body has been probably one of the most important experiences of my life. And I'm, I'm, I'm very confident that you guys are in great hands with Evelyn. She's from this community. She loves Auburn. Sorry, I'm tearing up a little bit. It means a lot. Thank y'all. But war eagle.
War eagle. Thank you. We appreciate your dedication, your hard work. I don't know how long ago this particular tradition started, and this partnership started, with our students at Auburn University actively participating in our city council meeting. I cannot tell you that. I think it's just one of the most valuable things we do. I think it draws a line that we're together in this. They don't live in their world. We don't live in our world. We live in the same world. We just maybe stay up a little bit at different times and go to bed at different times. But other than that, we all love Auburn in our own way, and our students are very, very important to us, and we look forward to that discussion on Friday. And congratulations. I know somebody in DC, if you need some help getting around. But we're very proud of you and thankful for your hard work and dedication. Okay. All right. At this time, we'll open up for Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the city council about anything on our agenda tonight, this will be your time to come forward and speak. We'll ask that you give your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. There are two items that are under the resolutions that do have public hearings attached. If you'd like to speak on one of those two items, please wait till those public hearings are open and speak at that time. But if anything else you'd like to speak to the city council about, now's your time to come forward. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll continue to move ahead with City Manager's Communications.
Mayor, under City Manager's Communications, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. One vacancy is to fill a regular position, and the other is for a supernumerary position. Terms will begin January 21st, 2025, and end January 20th, 2028. We have two incumbents that I believe are eligible for reappointment.
Thank you.
You ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I'd like to remove item 8 Bravo 4, 8B4, please.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remove item 8 Bravo 2.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll go with 8B2.
Item 8B2 authorizes a contract with Cure Link LLC for the Employee Assistance Program with an estimated annual cost of $47,952.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Morton?
Yes, sir. When I was perusing that, I noticed mention of counseling and legal services, which caught my attention. I wonder if you could provide a little more detail on this, and it would be.
Yeah, I'll have our Human Resources Director, Lynda Denar, provide more detail. But Employee Assistance Program is normal for all major employers and provide a lot of different assistance that are available to employees for limited to no cost. So Lynda, just, or you can go up there if you want.
Yes, it's counseling, it's short-term counseling for Employee Assistance Program. It's essentially anytime an employee has a hardship, whether it's family-related, work-related, or public safety department, they have their own, but they utilize ours as well. So if there was a bad scene that they were on, and they needed counseling to help with their, they could call. So what it provides is six short-term counseling sessions, and then if they need a referral after that, they'll go through our insurance. There's also the legal. That is very minor. So it's essentially a will, so it can provide employees a free will if they'd like to use that. That's, really covers the only legal. There's a 30-minute legal advice that there is included in that. So whether it's through a divorce or any legal advice that they want, they have a 30-minute session. So that's as far as the legal part goes. The bigger part is just getting the employees what they need on a short-term counseling basis.
Very good.
And I would like to clarify, the $47,000 is for the three years, so it's $15,000 per year.
I apologize. It's great. It's $2 per person. Yeah.
I wrote it wrong. Yeah.
You good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 8B4 authorizes a purchase of two 2025 Ford F-150 Super Crew pickup trucks for the Environmental Services Department in a total amount of $95,586.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Griswold?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the details of this, the two vehicles that are being replaced will be retained for other uses. So in effect, this is not really a replacement purchase, but it is an expansion purchase, and the budget indicated one replacement and one expansion. So again, I'm generally opposed to expansion of our fleet. I think we need to make more efficient use of the fleet, and so that's something I'd like people to consider. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And the motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Under ordinances, item 9A amends Article 2 Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 7 of the City Code of the City of Auburn to be compliant with the new state floodplain development ordinance developed by FEMA, and in cooperation with the Alabama Department of Water Resources to meet or exceed minimum national flood insurance program requirements. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and a main motion is still needed for this item.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's an ordinance. We got to introduce it, correct?
No, you do not, because you're on second reading.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do I need unanimous consent? We don't need to go through with?
No.
Okay.
Second reading.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Mr. Coblenz, I'll turn it over to you, whether you'd like to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I was the one who postponed this, or non-unanimous consent at the last council meeting, I just wanted to provide a little more summary of what we're doing with this ordinance. And I just thought it'd be helpful, first of all, to give a little background on this ordinance. And I'll tell you, a lot of this was found in the August 2024 edition of the open line that comes with your water bill. So you can find a lot of this information, helpful regarding flood insurance and, and different floodplain development activities that happened with an Auburn, City of Auburn. But the City of Auburn has been a member of the NFIP Community Rating System since 2014, and the City of Auburn received a Class 8 score on our community ranking, rating system application in 2014, which primarily benefits the citizens of Auburn by giving them a 10% discount on flood insurance. So the NFIP, which stands for the National Flood Insurance Program, provides flood insurance to property owners, renters, and businesses. And the NFIP works with communities required to adopt and enforce floodplain management regulations that help mitigate flooding effects. The NFIP is managed by FEMA, and it's a partnership between the federal government, property casualty insurance industry, state and local officials, lending institutions, and property owners. And flood insurance is available to anyone living in one of the almost 23,000 participating NFIP communities. They, they offer direct policies through their website in addition to policies through the private sector, insurance companies. So I wanted to speak a little bit about what we're doing with this amendment tonight, just to clarify a little bit of this. So we are updating the floodplain development ordinance to be compliant with the new state model floodplain development ordinance. So FEMA and the State Department, Office of Water Resources, they completed final revisions to the state model floodplain development ordinance, and we are adopting that model ordinance to, in order to meet or exceed FEMA's requirements or criteria for NFIP communities. So this is an update that's required by FEMA so to maintain our participation in the NFIP program. So we have a, we have a ordinance now. We're providing an update. So I'd like to ask the city manager if there's, for some clarification on what has changed between what is existing and what, you know, we are updating with this policy or with this ordinance, and also why are we updating this policy?
So I'll give you a little bit of why. We received an email in 2023 requesting that we do this for the very reasons you stated, to go with a new model ordinance, and why are we here in late 2024, bringing it before you, and then we'll get into the differences. We're bringing it before you because we submitted it in a timely manner for early 2024 by a deadline required by, by the state, and it took them a long time to review it, and we got it back in late October. Their review of our model ordinance meeting those criteria, which is why you saw it at the second meeting in November for its first try. But I'll have Scott Cummings, our Executive Director of Development Services, explain a little bit more to your other part of the question.
Great. Thank you.
So periodically, has FEMA's auditing the state's records and looking at when ordinance, when these local ordinances were updated, it came to their attention that, that we were past due and needed the ordinance to come to compliance with FEMA's national standards, as you mentioned, you know, previously. So a lot of what has really changed in here is, is some, you know, naming references and, and formatting and things of that nature. There's no significant change to the ordinance itself from, from that standpoint. We received the model ordinance. We basically reiterated that model ordinance with, with our local, you know, references to our, you know, government, the City of Auburn, Lee County, so forth, and remitted that to them, and it took, you know, until, I think we remitted it in January of this year. We got comments back in October. So, you know, in essence, we turned that around to you as, as quickly as we could, you know, following that.
So there's no significant changes to it, and this is, yeah, this is just an insurance thing. It doesn't have to do with any type of flood zone that you're in or designating that thereof. This is just the model ordinance that deals with people who are in a floodplain, which the city does not choose. That is also a FEMA function.
Correct. I could add to that. I mean, those, there has, those processes have run parallel in this particular manner, in that the floodplain is being updated, but that process started in '22, and then during that audit, they determined that we needed to update the floodplain ordinance.
So this was not precipitated by any specific project or anything that was going on? This is a regular change that is scheduled to occur? I'm assuming that, that we needed update to the model ordinance that's been proposed?
Correct. In their initial communication to us in, in August of '23, this was supposed to have been updated in, in, by February of '24 this year. So with the delay in them responding to us, then, you know, we, we need to get this turned around as quickly as possible.
Has there been any gap in, like, insurance coverage? If anybody had a?
Not that we're aware of. No. And this is also because of, Councilman Coblenz spoke of the discount rate also, because, because of compliance with this. And so that's where it stands, but it's unilaterally applied citywide. This is an ordinance for the entire city of anybody who is in a floodplain as deemed by FEMA. That is not a city function. The city engineer by this ordinance is the administrator of the floodplain, and that is just because somebody has to be the floodplain administrator, and that, in these definitions, equals the city engineer.
What, what, obviously, we've talked about the insurance benefit. What other benefits do we get from being NFIP community, participating community?
I mean, I think that's the main thing, is it's really to protect our citizens or businesses that are, you know, in flood-prone areas to, to, you know, be afforded that protection. You read a lot about those who are benefiting from that is from the recent hurricanes, and it's, I've seen that specifically referenced in articles even to this, this morning.
So what I mean, but, but by participating, having this ordinance in place, is it, does it help mitigate flood risk in our community by having standards by which we, you know, have to regulate development within the floodplain?
To some degree, it does. To some degree, it does, it does speak to, you know, what you can and can't do within the floodplain. It speaks to ways to, you know, mitigate that, the process to appeal, you know, flood, flood zones within a, on a particular property. So it does, it does address those matters specifically. But those, again, are FEMA's requirements. They're not necessarily ours to enforce. We make sure that if anybody is proposing to do something in the floodplain, that they have gone through those processes with FEMA to get the release. And we require those letters from FEMA and the, off, the State Office of Water Resources to, you know, provide that and to us for our files and records if someone is proposing to do something within or around the floodplain.
Okay. Does it give us access in the event of a flood to better federal assistance or, or any? I mean, obviously, the flood insurance, but is it helpful to be a part of the NFIP because of, you know, more, you know, we're complying regulatorily, you know, with more of their stuff, so we have opportunity to have better access to better rates on insurance and whatnot?
Right, absolutely. Absolutely does.
I just, yeah, like I said, I just wanted to reiterate that we're really just updating what our existing ordinance is. We're coming to the state model ordinance that FEMA and the State Department Office of Water Resources proposed. And so I think this is a great benefit to our citizens with the discount that's provided. And I think that's something we ought to move forward with tonight.
And if we don't, and if we don't update this ordinance, we don't participate in NFIP, correct?
NFIP or the discount is?
Yeah, if we don't, yeah, if we don't update the ordinance, then, then our benefits will be suspended until such times we do update it, so.
And the discounts that citizens receive would go away, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion second. Roll call.
Foreman?
No public hearing, Mayor. There's no public hearing.
There's no public hearing, yeah. We're about to vote on it right now. Yes, roll call.
Foreman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Koblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Under resolutions, item 10A is a conditional use request for an eight-unit multi-unit development located at the southern terminus of Cherokee Road in the Development District Housing Zoning District. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of four to three at its November 14th meeting. This item was postponed at the November 19th city council meeting. A main motion is still needed for this item, and a public hearing is required.
May for approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Before we open the public hearing at the pleasure of the council, I'd like to ask the, the developer's representative to come forward and, and make a few comments and maybe answer some questions from the, from the dais, if that's, if everybody's okay with, with starting that way. All right, Mr. Rice?
Good evening. Blake Rice, Barrett Simpson Engineering. Thank you for having me. Be happy to answer any questions. I can give a quick rundown of the history of how this proposed project got here. My client, to tell you the truth, I can't explain exactly how he ended up with the property. I'm not, not really sure. But he does own a piece of property that is in this location with Development District Housing Zoning and looked, has looked at multiple ways to develop this property. And it is, it's a challenging piece. It's geometrically oddly shaped. It's a triangle piece. To, to access it off of Cherokee Drive, you've got to cross a fairly significant stream. It has an existing old dedicated public right-of-way on it that would have to be vacated as well, that doesn't go anywhere. So there's, there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle as we put it together. First and foremost, what, what was looked at was a single-family detached subdivision. Believe we can get five, maybe six homes on this piece of property by extending Cherokee Drive and creating a cul-de-sac and homes around it. When we looked at it, that was not overly attractive for a number of different reasons. One is the, the geometry of the property is such that if anybody's ever been into a cul-de-sac and you start looking at how, how those lots are pie-shaped, and they become very deep very quickly in order to make use of the limited road frontage around a cul-de-sac to get your lots in. Well, when you do that, if anyone's ever noticed that those houses are pushed usually farther back from the back of curb, edge of pavement than they are around the rest of the street due to the width challenges in a cul-de-sac lot. Well, when that happens, you're, you're essentially just pushing the development farther back. And while looking at this, talking to city staff about different options, the idea was put forth by the developer that, you know, what if we, what if we kind of pulled that development in and brought it down to a townhome-type development where the overall land disturbance would be significantly less and buffers could be left around the perimeter of the property? And start looking at it, and you, you see the, the potential for buffers with a townhome-type development versus the requirement due to construction geometry and the topography of the land that if a single-family subdivision is constructed, which can be done, it would, it would essentially necessitate a full clearing of the property. So we looked at this in a variety of different manners. City staff saw fit to recommend approval of this to Planning Commission due to some of the reasons I just, I just detailed, as well as I believe the lack of public, increased public infrastructure. Because in the townhome development, that, that crossing of that creek, the Culvert Bridge, whatever methodology has to be used to cross that creek, that would be private infrastructure. Now, it would look just like a city street, and it would feel just like a city street because fire code dictates that the width is fairly similar. But at the end of the day, it would be private infrastructure and at the, under the ownership of the property and have to be maintained by the property owner. So that's kind of how we, we got here. It's our belief that a, you know, a well-done townhome project in this location would fit into the community and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your explanation. Scott, anybody have any questions yet? Mr. Griswold?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Appreciate it. I've had a lot of input from citizens, 20-plus more. We can talk about that later when we start doing the deliberations. But is it fair to say that it's really come down to a choice between townhomes that have more green space surrounding it on the piece of property or single-family lots that would eliminate a great deal of the trees and vegetation? Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, it's a very fair assessment.
Okay, so, and regardless of which approach is taken, if this is approved or disapproved, construction traffic will be similar regardless? It's going to be coming in on Cherokee, is that?
From a volume standpoint, it would be very, very, very similar. The, the heavy construction traffic would be identical. The vertical construction traffic would be very similar. If it was single-family, the duration would be longer because it's going to take longer to build out those single-family homes. If you do a townhome-style development, you're, you're going to build them all at one time. So, but as far as volume, yes, they would be very similar. Duration, single-family would be longer.
And there have been some concerns about traffic at Cherokee and Shelton Mill. The townhomes would generate two to three people per unit, where a single-family property would generate, we don't really know how much, but.
It's going to be very similar.
Be, be very similar in terms of traffic input.
With the addition of two units, possibly three units, to go from five to six single-family homes to eight townhomes, I would venture to say that they would be very similar because the, the townhomes would be geared towards young professionals. I would assume that you would get a couple of those units that were single-occupant. Whereas a single-family, you would have families in there. So I would think that the, at the end of the day, the traffic count would be almost identical.
You mentioned that your target audience is young professionals, but there's nothing to prohibit students from occupying the townhouses, homes or the single-family homes regardless of what's going in there?
That's correct. As long as they meet the family definition, DDH isn't allowed. I mean, is, is required to meet the family definition. But you, you know, as long as they meet that, students can rent anywhere in the City of Auburn.
Okay. And one other concern that people have brought to my attention is the occasional flooding on this lot that impacts some other homes on Cherokee and on Telahoma. It's been attributed, from what I understand from the city, is that that is due to blockage of the stream. You'll have to mitigate that one way or another.
You will. I've personally looked at, you know, portions of that stream bed, and it is, it is not maintained as much as you would, you would hope. It's been sitting there vacant for a long period of time. And there is some significant blockage in, existing in that stream bed. There's no floodplain in this area. So I, I would venture to say that it's all, if the stream itself was cleaned, that you would see significantly less water issues. But we'll have to deal with that one way or the other.
And as far as you know, there's nothing designated as wetlands on this property?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You may have to, some more questions after citizen input deliberation and whatnot, if anybody else has something to mention.
Anyone else on the council have any questions?
Yes, sir.
This might be repeating Councilman Griswold's question in part, but is there a difference in the impact on the trees for the six versus the eight dwellings?
Yes, sir, very much so. If you look at the layout that's up on the screen, you can see behind the, the townhome units, you're going to end up with, you know, a 30-foot area that is cleared for backyards and to tie in grading slopes. And then the proposal is to leave that whole end corner of that triangle undisturbed. If you, if you push a single-family cul-de-sac into there, the cul-de-sac itself will be centered about where the parking lot island is, right in the middle of the parking lot. That would be the center of that cul-de-sac, and the, and the lots would have to, you know, go all the way around it. So in order to fit those lots in there, you're going to have to push those houses farther and farther back. So you will essentially be pushing the houses as far back as possible to gain the maximum number of lots around that cul-de-sac, which will necessitate essentially a complete clearcutting of anything that's not protected by the stream buffer.
And one other question, if I may. You, you mentioned something that I, I hadn't read about or thought about, but the, you said the access road coming in Cherokee would be private or public?
In the townhome proposal, it would be private once it leaves the existing Cherokee right-of-way.
So up to the parking lot, it would be private between?
It would, once it enters the property itself, it would be private throughout the entirety of the property.
And who would maintain that, actually?
The homeowners association.
Okay.
And if we're houses, it would be?
It would be public throughout. You would, you would extend the public right-of-way from Cherokee up and surround the cul-de-sac. So it would be 100% public infrastructure.
Questions, comments?
I have a question for Megan.
Please.
Blake, I think I might be more.
Yeah, thank you, Blake. We'll, we'll call you back up. We need you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Megan, can you expand on the city's policy on tree replacement or tree cover?
I'm going to get some assistance from the planning director and some other department heads if it comes into play. But generally speaking, we don't have an ordinance that speaks to tree clearing at all other than you have to get permitting for larger lots to clear and so on. But if you're referring to your own home, you can cut all the trees you want that are on your property in your yard, and the city has nothing to say about it. If you're a business or trigger something in our zoning ordinance on a home, a townhome or whatever that requires landscaping per the zoning ordinance, nothing keeps you from cutting it down. But you have to have X amount of plant material and tree inches and shrubbery on your property per the zoning ordinance. I'm not referring to cutting in, in wetlands or other things that are regulated differently. But for the most part, there is no regulatory item that keeps anybody from clearing property. They do have to follow timbering plans, among other things, depending on size of property. But there isn't something that, where the staff gets to turn around and say, you can't cut those trees down.
Thank you.
One other thing, there was a light mention of traffic. And I thought, just, just for the sake of clarity, I'll have our interim city engineer and already traffic engineer explain the trip differential between a townhouse, house and a single-family home.
You were determined to put me on the spot tonight.
I was. You needed, it's good for you. Welcome.
Thank you. Actually, yeah, the, their townhouses actually have a slightly lower trip generation than the single-family. So the townhouses will have slightly less impact than the, than the single-family.
So you look at it, in general, rule of thumb is seven trips per day out of a townhouse and 10 trips per day out of a single-family house. It's just a, a manual standard. So depending on how you slice and dice it, it's 56 as townhouses, could be 60 as six houses or 50 as five houses there, trips a day. This is just, when you're, there's a lot of discussion about traffic generated by them themselves, and it's just a rule of thumb. I wanted you to have awareness and for the citizens that are here that, that want to speak to this so that they just have awareness of what that looks like, which means they're virtually the same, depending on which unit count you go with.
If these were very simple lots and townhomes, would this be, require conditional use?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, can you talk to this being zone DDH? How long is that, has it been zone DDH and maybe some of the reasoning behind that?
Well, you know, I, I always love to refer to the 1984 zoning map, just to be sure I'm not missing anything. This zoning ordinance was created in 1984, and this property has been zoned Development District Housing since 1984. Parcels like this were created as a buffer zone between what we used to call Development District, which is now Comprehensive Development District or CDD, and/or Redevelopment District, RDD. They were usually 400-foot strips or swaths, and they run all around the city in these zones of DDH. DDH has the same amount of unrelated occupancy allowed, which is that family definition applies as NC Zone does, no more than two unrelated. That applies, but DDH has a tad more flexibility to allow some things like townhomes because it's considered a little bit of a transition area. But it's been, nothing's changed about this zoning since this zoning ordinance was originally adopted in 1984.
Since 1984, Megan, the development that has occurred here is the perimeter of this parcel is all single-family homes, correct?
It is, as far as I know, yep.
Yep.
The south is multifamily.
There is a little bit south into the west, I would say.
Yeah, southwest is just kind of along.
Gay Street, yeah.
But on the, the actual parcel perimeter, it's single-family, correct?
Any other questions for the staff? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this, we ask that you'll come forward and share your name and address for the record. And you'll have five minutes to speak to the city council.
Brad Prater, 314 Telahoma Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Council member, council members, thank you for the opportunity. Provide some commentary regarding the proposed conditional use permit. Our property abuts the northeast corner of the proposed development. And I just wanted to outline a few reasons why we disagree with this conditional use permit. First of all, for what we're determining, the administrative irregularities. Wanted to bring to the council's attention the incongruent advertisements adjacent property owners received, as well as the required advertisement in the Auburn Village newspaper for the public hearing of this conditional use permit during Planning Commission hearing. Letter we received clearly identified the CUP as a townhouse development. Subsequent documents released for the Planning Commission meeting identified CUP as a multi-unit development. City's zoning ordinance clear that there are two distinct uses. At best, this is an administrative oversight that should require re-advertising, rehearing at the Planning Commission level. At worst, it's a bait-and-switch tactic. During the Planning Commission meeting video, you can hear staff say that at this point, you wouldn't. you can hear staff say that at this point, you wouldn't know if this was going to subdivide or not, which is incorrect. It's, these are kind of a defining characteristic of the townhomes within our zoning ordinance is that it is a subdivided fee simple ownership of an individual, individual lot. An MUD can sit on a single lot. A conditional use permit is non-transferable, so it's only granted for a single use, can't be transmitted to an alternate use, so they can't say they're doing townhomes and then put in a multi-unit development. It'd be inappropriate to allow this. It'd be similar to allowing a nature and wildlife preserve, also a conditional use permit within DDH zoning district, and then discuss a golf course, also a conditional use permit within the DDH zoning district. Finally, zoning compatibility. The subject property, like we said, is defined as a DDH, designed to promote conventional and performance, single-family housing, and will provide a transition, transition between the neighborhood conservation and the CDD zone. Property, as mentioned, is surrounded on all sides except approximately a fifty-foot stretch to the southwest by neighborhood conservation zones. The NC Zone District is, quote, "intended to preserve the character of existing neighborhoods." It is also intended to provide for infilling of existing neighborhoods on vacant lots within single-family detached dwellings. What we question is, how can the proposed development be transitioning between the CDD and the NC districts when it is entirely embedded within and solely accessible through the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning District? That is not a transition, that is part of the neighborhood. Further, it seems from the zoning district definitions, NC is intended to infill vacant lots in existing neighborhoods, and this property likely should have been rezoned to match the surrounding districts. Approving the conditional use permit would result in almost a de facto spot zone for this particular parcel. Its poor physical planning to place such a large quantity of parking at the dead end of a single-access private driveway, these vehicles will contribute undue wear on the city's road, residential road, resulting in additional time and cost efforts from the city to repave it more often. The zoning ordinance requires MUDs to reserve a certain amount of open space that is a, quote, "focal point of the development" and, quote, "of meaningful quality." The current site plan that you saw indicates open space that is neither a focal point nor of meaningful quality. During the Planning Commission, I heard arguments from both the applicant and the commission that by right, the applicant could clearcut the property and build single-family residences. Stated by staff that this, if this property were zoned NC-8, as all the surrounding properties are, it could be clearcut and twenty single-family homes developed as a matter of right. That ignores the easements and other site restrictions. I would love to understand how they plan to do that when a seventy-foot-wide stream buffer cuts across the northwest edge of the property and a ten-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement bisects it. Even if the city's right-of-way is vacated, there's only about a 1.6 to 1.7 developable acres. We shouldn't confuse the apparent lower density of the proposed conditional use development on the usable area and compare it to an unachievable theoretical density. Single-family detached homes will also provide opportunity for property ownership. While it's beyond the scope of this conditional use permit hearing to discuss affordable housing, single-family detached homes on individual lots have the opportunity to provide access to property wealth through ownership as opposed to a multi-unit development rental. We've mentioned some environmental concerns. The urban stream that runs through the property often floods low areas abutting the stream. Our homes are built far enough away, but increasing impervious area will impact not only our homes, but homes further downstream as well. Finally, the MUD is initially presented as at the dead end of almost three-hundred-foot-long private drive. It is not ideal for a fire truck access to get to. City-engineered cul-de-sacs are much more maneuverable for fire apparatus, and I think you should consider what the fire chief would say about the proposed access.
Thank you. Who'd be next?
John Cochran, 878 Cherokee. We're on the corner of the property there where it touches. I know y'all have read all the letters and everything, I'm sure, and we're here because one vote short in the Planning Commission, you know, to refer this to you. Three, three people there understood, and I, I think it was Phil that said something about this just didn't seem right. And, and I, I agree with him. The conditional use for this property is exactly that. It's conditional. It's a special privilege to, to use that in a DDH. Reading the zoning ordinance described in DDH, it has a primary purpose and then a special use purpose, okay? That's clear. It, it's clearly stated the primary purpose is conventional, conventional residences, okay? And then special permission, special, you could do these other things, like a performance house, like the townhouse, okay? That's not a secondary use. It's special. There has to be special needs for them to do it. It has to have special permission for them to grant it, basically. They say, look at this. And the part where they send the paperwork and they skip over and say, well, we meet these conditions in 803.04 or whatever, but they skip right over the first part of, of the section in 803, where they say the review that they're supposed to perform considers the proposal in terms of the zoning and in the, the use that's in the vicinity of the proposal now. And if you look at that, you clearly see that this is a single home dwelling area. I mean, it's, it's surrounded. There's, you know, not anything else there. The townhomes, I, I live right next there to them. I would prefer, you know, I hear everybody talking about cutting this, cutting that. We all know the use, traffic, people-wise, is gonna be real similar between six houses, five houses, whatever they can get in there in this townhouse. The townhouse, it just doesn't belong there. It's out of place. That's, that's pretty much it's simple. It lowers my property value. It's out of place. It doesn't belong, and I'd appreciate if y'all would deny this. Let them turn it into a conventional subdivision. I'm not against that. They do have some challenges with the stream buffer. I don't think it's big enough to get the seventy-foot destination. I think it drains over a hundred acres, so it's probably gonna be fifty-foot or something like that, forty-foot. They'll have to deal with that. They can get a few lots in there and, and keep, you know, they don't have to clearcut. Clearcut's a relatively new thing in building the subdivisions. We all live and drive through Cary Woods, drive through our neighborhood. They didn't clearcut those neighborhoods when they put those houses in there. I've had to spend several thousand dollars clearing trees because they didn't cut enough, you know? So to say you have to do that is total, and, you know, we need to just throw that out. It's a choice that developers making to increase their revenue and their profit, you know? If they're gonna develop it, fine. Make it a subdivision like the rest of the houses, you know? We've got buffer requirements, separation in the zoning thing. Use it. Don't give them a special permission because there's no need. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Who'd be next?
I'm Sarah Collins, 875 Cohaba Drive. So just around the corner from where this is proposed, and I actually have a slightly different perspective to offer. My understanding from my correspondence with Mr. Griswold is that regardless of what happens with this property, it's going to be developed. I think I can speak for our neighbors in saying that we wish that it weren't being developed, but because it is going to be developed, I actually support townhomes going into this area. It is a quiet neighborhood. These go at the back of that neighborhood and give an opportunity for folks to join in this quiet community and allow a little bit of gentle density to go in as well. It provides more sustainable options to people, both from a, an environmental standpoint and a financial standpoint. So the environmental impacts of putting townhomes in is much less than putting single-family houses in because of the way that utilities have to be run to single-family houses versus townhomes. And then, once the townhomes are built, from an environmentally standpoint, friendly standpoint, they're easier to heat, cool, and maintain because of the shared walls. That reduces heating and cooling costs more environmentally friendly overall. I also like that, that townhome option allows for more trees to be maintained. I would challenge the developer to look at different options for parking. Having a parking lot is not standard to having townhomes. I lived in a townhome for three years on North Gay Street. It has a nice little garden, a little driveway up to a garage. No need for a giant parking lot to go across the whole front of the section. And to the gentleman that was saying, these kind of mud developments are supposed to maintain a focal point of green space. Having a different configuration for parking allows you to incorporate more usable green space, maybe in the front of the property versus the back of the property. You know, that's not my area of expertise, but I think that there's room for creativity in how you do that, so that it's more appealing to the neighborhood and provides opportunities for, you know, young professionals and young families or older folks who are looking to retire, downsize, have a little bit less to maintain, and allow them to be part of our great little neighborhood right there, regardless of what happens with that development. We absolutely need to have traffic calming in the neighborhood. Even as it is now, there are things that we need to do on Cherokee and Cohaba to keep people from speeding. You know, in my research into what might be possible, putting curb extensions at the entrances to the neighborhood and at where Cohaba and Cherokee meet helps to sharpen those corners so that people slow down coming into and out of the curves there, and then putting some sort of side striping along both sides of the road. There are examples in, like Cary Woods, where you have sort of bicycle lane-style side striping that narrow the roads, cause people to slow down, give a little bit of buffer zone for people walking in the neighborhood, things of that nature. So, kind of summary, I'm not opposed to the townhomes. I think they would allow opportunity to come into the neighborhood, to have good neighbors in there. But we have to have some sort of traffic calming something to make sure that we're absorbing any kind of increased traffic and dealing with the traffic that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd be next?
Anthony Moss, 866 Cohaba Drive. Thank you very much for allowing me to come forward. I have no particular prepared set of, of points to make here, except this is an unusual community for all the people that live here. This is a very quiet place. We have a very reduced amount of traffic through the area, and I think that's the primary concern that we all have. We also have a particularly green area in, in this location. We, we have a lot of birds, a lot of animals, and a lot of natural environment that we live in, and I think we find that to be an extremely high-quality style of life in the area. People come to visit us from time to time and remark on the quality of this location. Actually, I think, quite frankly, better than many areas in Cary Woods because there are no through-streets, okay? Everything is based on a C shape, and that cul-de-sac that's being referred to, of course, that stops any, any further traffic through to the other side. I worry about what will happen eventually if any kind of development occurs in, within this zone. And I was looking at the, at the map here on my phone, and it truly, this, this region of the woods really, truly provides a buffer zone between neighborhoods. There's an enormous development on the other side of those woods, and it was many years we tolerated listening to having this, this place being put in, and it just never seemed to quit. I'm, I'm sure there'll be ways to adjust this development as it proceeds to find a through-cut somehow to get people over to Telahoma. I'm sure that's what will happen, okay, eventually, okay? That may not be the design now, but I'm sure that's what will happen. And when that happens, this whole, that's certainly the lower end. I live on the upper end of this, this neighborhood, but the lower end of the neighborhood will really be very severely impacted. Will be impacted, too. People still turn up the hill and come up towards us. I'm also concerned about the nature of the area. It's very wet there. I, I haven't walked through there for a long time, but I remember remarking years ago when we came in here that no one in their right mind would develop this area because it's, it's so problematic. And there are, there's a waste system that goes through there as well, and I can imagine that there will be considerable damage to that, that small watershed, and will have impact on people further downstream. That's all I really have to say. I'm a working biologist. This is a beautiful place where we live, and we, I, I agree entirely with what Sarah initially said. We just don't want it developed, okay? But if it has to be done, it has to be done in such a way that has extremely minor impact on the way of life here. That's fundamentally what we treasure here in Auburn, isn't it? We have a great place to live. And you know, the large subdivision behind there, and sorry, I don't know what the name of it is, but it sub-tends Gay and goes all the way across to Teloma, that basically represents just stripping the land. When we first came, that was undeveloped, rough forest, secondly, a lot of secondary growth, of course, but it was a much quieter neighborhood, okay? The people there are fine, mix of students and professionals, and I have nothing against the people that live there, but it's a very different place now than it was, and I think it's a shame. You continue to, to develop Auburn in this way, we won't earn the name, the prettiest village on the planet, for much longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who'd be next?
Hi, City Council, Stephen Smith, 804 Cohaba Drive. I won't say much more than what was in my email, except want to reiterate the fact that I think townhomes will just kill the dynamic of our street. We're a quiet street. You see the majority of my neighbors are a little different than me, right? Townhomes are just not gonna mesh with our community. We're a quiet street. I don't understand why we can't just extend the dynamic of our street to more single-family homes. In my email, I stated, would you do this in Cary Woods? Would you do this in Groveville? Would you do this in Pickwood, right across the street from us? I think the answer is no. Those are similar community stars. Just because we're not named does not mean that we shouldn't be respected the same way. With that being said, single-family homes would keep our dynamic. Multi-family homes, I don't think would. Fine with it being developed. That's the right of the developer, of course, but if it's gonna be developed, I don't think it matters how much of it's developed, to the degree. If it's clearcut completely, that happens. I know there's concerns about trees and whatnot, but if it's gonna be developed, it's gonna be developed. What's more important to me is keeping the integrity of the neighborhood, and that's what's foremost for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who'd be next?
Ann Moss, 866 Cohaba.
Pull that microphone down. There you go.
Okay. Ann Moss, 866 Cohaba. I reiterate what everybody before me has said. I want single-family homes. I'm afraid of our property values going down, so I just am championing that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Who'd be next? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Thank you.
Please.
In addition to the, two, three, four, five, six folks we heard this evening, I received input from seventeen other citizens on Cherokee, Teloma, Cohaba, and Mount Vernon. And the public sentiment is overwhelmingly against the townhomes, and the, the primary reason is, is the, the impact on the, the community. The traditional family homes better represent the, the current residents and what they desire to have. So I'm, I, I feel badly. So I'm, I feel badly about the potential loss of the woods and the vegetation and whatnot. And, but I'm going to have to go along with the desires of the community. And as I say, the, of the twenty, what was it, twenty-three citizens I've heard from, seventeen of them oppose this development as far as townhomes go. Three said, okay, they'll hold their nose just because of the impact on the green space. But, and then there were three that just simply had some general comments. But anyway, I feel strongly that my role is to support the desires of my constituents. And again, that's Cherokee, Toluoma, Cohaba, and Mount Vernon residents have all spoken out dramatically in opposition of the conditional use.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Anyone else? Anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I took the time to watch the planning commission deliberation on this as well, and I was curious to see the reactions of the neighboring property owners. And at that time, as I, as I listened, the green space factor, the trees were brought up on a number of occasions from concerned neighboring properties that the loss of those trees was of great concern. And then we, as a council, started receiving emails from people who articulated a larger argument against this proposal. And I reached out to several of them. I certainly responded to every email and I spoke with a number of people. And as it, as the conversation developed, it, while there was a high degree of appreciation that the developer thought in the terms of less impact on that piece, as the conversations developed though, it seemed that the incompatibility of the townhome use versus the house became the largest concern. And to that end, I share Councilman Griswold's dismay at the loss of, the potential loss of trees, but at the end of the day, we represent the concerns of our neighbors and it was clear to me that the most concerning thing was that the, what is to be built there better match what is already there. And I thought Mr. Prater did an excellent job of arguing the case of DDH when it's, when it's, one of its purposes is to act as a transition zone, that it really is a moot point in this particular parcel because there is, it transitions back to NC. So, so for those reasons, I will be supporting the wishes of the residents who don't believe that this development is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
I would like to express my appreciation to Blake Rice and his company for making, taking the time to talk with me and outline not only what they have proposed, but also the alternatives, which is the single-family homes. And I just, again, I would like, I appreciate the information you've provided and your openness and your willingness to talk about all this. And I certainly appreciate the input of all the citizens in this particular area. So thank you all.
I do have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Questions. Megan, can you speak to, there was a comment that this was a four-three vote and it wouldn't come to us. That's, this comes as a recommendation from the planning commission.
Correct. Planning commission only has sole authority over some subdivision regulation items.
So it would have come to this body regardless?
Absolutely. Even if they had recommended against it, it's still, at the applicant's choice, would come to you.
And if this were to be approved as a multi-unit development, as townhomes, is, are townhomes the only thing that could be built under this approval?
Mr. Wahid Cotton.
Yeah, I guess we kind of, so I talked to legal about it and I guess kind of what was on the site plan, I guess that's kind of the thing of the discrepancy right now. What was submitted was a site plan, not a preliminary plat that would actually have the lot lines on it that then would make it the townhomes. And so on the actual site plan, it says townhomes. I guess kind of the, like internally, I mean, we've talked about townhomes. So I mean, they could do townhomes if they wanted to, if they wanted to get that condition, if they wanted to do that conditional use approval. And so it would be treated as townhomes right now. And so if they wanted to switch into an MUD, they'd have to come back and do that.
So they'd have to come back through the hole?
Correct.
You're saying that fee simple is what's before them, even though MUD is also talked about?
Yes, and because that's, that's because this isn't a preliminary plat. And so preliminary plats don't come to council, final plats do. And so preliminary plats would have lived at the planning commission level. And so that was kind of one of the things with this development. It was kind of, normally you guys see triple and quadruple applications where you'll see the rezoning, annexation, et cetera, all come as one. But this one's kind of broken apart just because the landowner owns this piece of property. There's no due diligence that they're working through. And so this is just a site plan that is associated with conditional uses. Oftentimes preliminary plats are accompanying them, but with this being not tied to due diligence, period, this is just a site plan where they're getting the use approval and then they're going to come back. They would come back with a preliminary plat later if the townhomes is what they wanted to do.
But if it's on one lot of record, then what?
Yeah, so then if it was on one lot of record, they'd have to come back and do an MUD.
But that's what's before us?
No, the site plan. Yeah, so site plans don't show lot lines. Preliminary plats do. Site plans just show what the site is. And so like I said, it's, things aren't said about it until there's a preliminary plat that's submitted. And so that is what triggers the townhomes. That's, that was a comment that was referenced in the planning commission. That's what I said. On, on a site plan with, there are no lot lines, MUDs and townhomes look the same because there are no lot lines. And so then the preliminary plat is what makes that distinction and then triggers with, make it a townhome development.
Okay, I just want to be clear though, that the conditional use before us is an MUD and it states for townhomes. If we were to approve that, even though it says MUDs because it was advertised as such, what can be built if approved would only be townhomes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And not an MUD?
Correct.
And in its traditional format that we're used to seeing?
Correct, yes.
One other question for staff or for the city manager. Regardless of which option, whether it be the townhomes or the single-family units, do you see any scenario where we'll have a connection to Toluoma anytime in the future? I mean, that's a pretty broad thing, but do you anticipate that or see?
All of that connectivity that was mentioned was blocked by the city council some time ago when Madison Park redeveloped. So then that's connections to the South. When you're talking about Toluoma itself, you'd have to go through somebody's private property of which we don't have control of. And unless this city council is looking to condemn property to do so, I don't see that happening.
Thank you. And just to alleviate or to, I guess, address some concerns we heard on traffic, there's, there are specific procedures for asking for traffic calming devices. And that doesn't really apply to the actual site here, but it may apply to the neighborhood as a whole. So if anybody wants to talk about that, we can certainly do that, but there, it's.
It's on our website, yeah.
And it's citizen-generated. If you, if you have a desire and a need and you think there's a need for calming devices, you can apply for that. The city staff will evaluate it, get back with you, and then we'll go from there.
All right. Yeah, good. Anyone else have a comment or question for staff? Everybody good? Okay. So the vote on this would be to approve. So what's before you is to approve this conditional use. Okay? That would be the vote before you. All right. Lindsay, you good?
It's a voice vote.
It's a voice vote.
Voice vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we've got a motion of second, so if we can go through a voice vote?
Oh, just a straight-up vote.
Voice vote, no?
All in favor.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no.
Nay.
All right. Motion fails.
All right. Item ten B is sent to the vacation of an unneeded utility easement located at one-two-eight-seven Ogletree Road and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed, relinquishing the property to Cleveland Brothers Incorporated. A public hearing is required.
May for approval?
Second. The motion is second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to speak to the city council.
Jason, are you speaking on the easement?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone like to speak to item ten B? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, we have one other item of business. Item eleven A authorizes a contract with Alabama Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated, Company Incorporated, for the Dean Road Recreation Center roof replacement and HVAC project in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
May for approval?
Second. Have a motion of second. Any comments or questions from the council? Yes, sir.
I am thrilled, of course, to see this on the agenda tonight and understand that it's, has to be obligated by the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't have to be completed by the end of the year, just.
Twenty-twenty-six, we're good with that. It won't take that long. But yeah, because we're using rescue plan funds for this, we need to get all contractual matters dealt with by the end of December, by December, close of business on December thirty-first.
And those are federal funds or?
Those are federal funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, are also known as State and Local Fiscal Recovery Act.
Sunny, I'm also excited. This facility's been a big part of our community for a long, long time and there's been a lot of activities, a lot of things that have been played and a lot of children and adults that have spent time in there. I'm proud that we're continuing to find good use for it and this is part of the rehab of this building so it can continue to be a fruitful and productive place for all of our citizens.
And we will finally have air conditioning in all of our gyms.
That'll be nice, too.
In twenty-twenty-four, well, twenty-five, actually, it will finally happen.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to speak to the council about any topic. You'll have three minutes and we ask that you give us your name and address for the record as you come forward. Two weeks ago, I allowed a lady to speak over a minute past this time. That was my mistake and I ask you to all stay at the three-minute mark. I'll ask you to be complete at the three-minute mark. So please stay in the three-minute mark. This is also not a time to cheer and hoop and holler. We respect everybody and your opinions and the thoughts that you want to bring forward here tonight and you're welcome to be a part of our process. Okay? All right. Who would be first? Welcome back.
Jason Haney, one through four, Grazio Way. Thank you. So, good evening. I'd like to kindly request the status of discussed updates to Auburn's codes for revoking business licenses in regards to cases such as dishonest and deceptive behavior of companies like Houston Homes. I'd also like to point out to both the city council and Auburn citizens that Houston's Homes isn't the only Houston-owned business in the area. I urge Auburn citizens to boycott all Houston Homes companies, or Houston companies if possible. And I can at least speak for myself and nine thousand five hundred others to say that their businesses aren't welcome here anymore. Thank you for your time on this and a special thanks to Beth Witten for hosting discussion with the public last Tuesday. I hope that discussion on updates to the business license rules will continue and that fair and effective updates will move forward.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
City Council, good evening. Perry, fifteen eighteen VFW Road. So I want to talk about this floodplain development that you guys got going on right here. As far as I'm concerned, down on our street, they're building an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home in a floodplain. Now, I'm not sure if you guys know what that's going to do to our neighborhood. It's going to tax everybody out. We've been talking about this and we've been trying to figure out, how come you guys want to do this? And I gave you a piece of paper with that, that ordinance on it, the one with the revision on it. And that revision to me, I'm not sure where it's located in here. Because I'm thinking, you guys read this? All of this?
Yes.
So you know what this is? So then you know it doesn't go into effect until next year, right? Yeah. So ADAC said.
ADAC?
ADAC. Said that this ordinance won't go into effect till next year. Now they're building a home down there according to this. That paper. And I'm not sure if Auburn is in a floodplain. What do we need insurance for a floodplain for? Auburn has never been in a floodplain. What's the floodplain factor? None of that's been studied. So I think we need to try to figure out how we, as a people, can help Megan do the right thing for all the people. So I think we should have a call. Sit down, look through this and figure out what ADAC said. Also, what the information is being put out? I mean, according to the NI, information that I got, said middle Chattahoochee, lower Tallapoosa watershed. This watershed study, that's the easy way around. We should have did a community study so that everybody could have input whether or not Auburn needs a floodplain through FEMA. We don't need that. This, this, this process right here wasn't done right. It wasn't done right. But they want to tax us out in our neighborhood, so they're going to build homes in there. They're clearing the other side right now, but they said there's no permits. But yet they're clearing, getting ready to build. Something's off here. So you guys need to come up with a plan. We need to get a call so we can sit down and determine what's really happening. Because you and I both know, our eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house, four brickside home, will tax everybody out. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one Denton Drive, Auburn. My heart is really burdened listening to Perry. I went and looked at the VFW. I do deliveries in that area all the time, all the way down into the new subdivision, but also the first part of it. And I cannot understand why a house that large is at that place. And I'm, I'm in agreement with him. I don't understand about the floodplain. There is no floodplain that I can tell. There's nothing there. I don't even understand why it was done. I don't know what this eight-deckers stuff that he put, but I assume it's something of decency. But I'm concerned that this council voted without the proper information. And that's something that I have passed in the past was that you make decisions sometimes that are not totally appropriate because you were not given the proper information by the, by the city manager and the various people. Am I wrong? I have no idea, but I believe I'm right. And I see some of you shaking your head, especially Beth Witten.
Correct.
And, but why, why was this done? Why, why did you vote on it then? Can you give us, because I believe it should be a community thing. I would hate to see another community totally wiped out. It's already been wiped out. It's just got some left. These developers, it's fine to be a developer, is, we have to have new development. But let's, when this city planning, I mean, the planning commission, what is their job? It's not to stamp approval of every development. You know what it's for? It is to, to figure out a way to plan for the community, to make sure that that community has, everyone is involved. It is a one-sided thing. It's continuously pushing out everyone. There's a way to do it without just pushing everybody out. I mean, it's a, it's a perfect location. It's easy to get to downtown. It's easy to get everywhere except for the interstate, but beyond that, it is easy to move around in Auburn from VFW Road. And I'd hate to see those homes have to be pushed out because of what he said. I mean, I've been listening to him for the last three times he's come up here and I have been trying to figure out how it's set up. And I just, I can't, I'm confused. And I don't want y'all hollering at me again like you normally do. I would, I just want you to explain to me in details and everybody else, why those people on VFW have to be in a position that they have to be in and that y'all just voted. Because if he's correct and it's something that's not going to even pass and. Because if he's correct, and it's something that's not going to even pass until January, and y'all illegally let a house be built in that situation...
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Your time's up.
Oh, I'm not the lady that Ms. Carr liked ahead last week.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. I'm trying to do better. Who will be next?
Hi there. I am, I am also here for the Heritage Ridge developer.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Susan Pernito, 171 Sienna Place, Auburn. And I'm here about the Heritage Ridge developer. I just hope the council appreciates how bad the optics were with the tree being taken down, especially when we have Spirit and Independence flying in a game field just five miles away. And I hope you take that into consideration with all our future dealings with them. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Who'll be next?
Emily Cherry, 1306 Glen Circle, Opalika. But I have worked in Auburn all of my life, and I just want to say that I am one of the people that is outraged by what Houston Homes did. And I know the city council has no authority to revoke any permits or anything, but I hope that you are able to talk to the people at the planning committee, and also to consider revising permits for the bad actors that we have come in contact with, to perhaps not be allowed to continue with their bad actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay. We'll close citizens' communications. Council have anything they'd like to say?
Megan, could you just, for clarification, please state, or, in my opinion, there's no, zero correlation between what was given to us, and which actually doesn't even match what we voted on this evening, and that the floodplain update is a citywide ordinance and is not directed at any specific individual development?
Correct. There's also some confusion there. Our flood maps, and we, that are called firm panels, that are produced by the FEMA, I think it's Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. The city has zero control over floodplains, as designated by the federal government. I don't have a big screen for you, but if you can see on my iPad, everything in green is a floodplain in the city, all over the place. These are not choices of the staff of the city of Auburn, they were not choices of the city council of the city of Auburn, they were not choices of the citizens of the city of Auburn. They are meeting a standard established by the federal government. And development and floodplains can kill people. And I want to be clear, unless you meet the guidelines adopted in the ordinance today, which we've long had a floodplain ordinance, but unless you meet the guidelines to develop in a floodplain, you're not allowed to do so. The house in question at 1521 VFW Road, the new maps that are being established about floodplains do, and Mr. Perry is correct, they are implemented in 2025. We have current floodplain maps, not a floodplain ordinance, separate the two, that are already in effect. The city staff requires that any development going on adjacent to a floodplain can only be built in the most restrictive floodplain designated by the federal government. In this case, at this property at 1521 VFW, the current floodplain is more restrictive than the future floodplain, and therefore, the owner of that property is developing to the most restrictive standard, which will actually change in 2025. In terms of the zoning of that property, it has also been that way since 1984, and the property owner is restricted by only a minimum lot size, not a maximum house size, as long as it meets all zoning ordinance and building code criteria. So the city has zero control over the private property owners, an estate of a family who sold property to a developer or home builder in Auburn who chose to build a home of that size on that property. That is not something that we have any current control over. That is a property owner's right to build, as long as they meet our ordinances. So the city had no legal means to stop any development. We welcome the opportunity to meet with Mr. Perry to explain the difference. The flood maps have long been in place. There are hordes of floodplains in Auburn, all over, especially if you live near a creek. It just is reality. And they sometimes shrink and sometimes they grow, and sometimes they show up in places we never expected. And the city does have the ability. Each of those property owners impacted are notified, and they can argue and say certain elevations of their property don't comply. But a lot went into this. It was a very public process about flood maps, which again, the city manages aspects of that, but we don't have choices in that. And so there is some confusion. Some of the documents that you have are definitions from the zoning ordinance, and not that of the floodplain ordinance, nor of FEMA maps. They're coming directly from the zoning ordinance that speaks to it a little bit. So it's, it's a mix of multiple pieces of information that are in front of you, but we are very happy to sit down with Mr. Perry and go through all of those. And the flood maps, again, are not under the control of the city of Auburn, but our city engineer does have to be the floodplain administrator.
Thank you.
And what we did tonight was because we needed to do that to serve the entire community.
As, as Councilman Koglan said, it's the entire community. It's not just national flood insurance. It is the, the community rating system that actually helps give a discount to those citizens who choose to avail themselves of flood insurance. However, if you live in a floodplain and you're trying to get a mortgage, you're not getting a mortgage without flood insurance. And so what we're trying to do here, and what the council adopted tonight, is make sure our citizens have the best opportunities to insure their properties, and to save money on their insurance by us complying with this ordinance that impacts every parcel in the city that's in a floodplain.
Absolutely. For the record, our staff does an excellent job preparing us, and on this particular topic, we postponed it two weeks, so we could all understand it more, so that our community understood that we were digging further into this, to receive more questions on this, and so that we made the right decision for the right reasons tonight. We did not hurry this through, even though there's a clock ticking that we needed to get this done. Correct? Anything else? All right. Is there a move to adjourn? Say move. Where adjourn?